First of all, I want to thank you all for attending. And I'm sure we will have some additional viewers as the meeting proceeds. One of my goals this year with the school committee was to present a sort of a school finance 101, sort of a takeoff on what the town did last year, about a year and a half ago, so that there is as much information flowing to our students, our staff, our parents and residents of town, most if not all who are taxpayers. Tonight's presentation will focus on the revenue side of the equation. And in two or three weeks, I will do another presentation that will focus on the expense side and how to look at find certain things that you might be searching for in our budget, whether they're staffing, services, materials and supplies, contract services, et cetera. And so I want to be as complete as possible. If there's something in either this presentation or the expense presentation in two or three weeks that I haven't covered for you, please let me know. Please send me an email and let me know that you would like to hear me discuss a certain topic or be more specific about something. And I'll be very glad to do that. Julie, next slide, please. Well, what does our school budget represent? And certainly, a little bit of this material will be familiar in that some of it is in our budget from time to time. But it's important to continue to underscore that the budget is a result of the policies of the school system and the priorities that are expressed by all of our stakeholders. You know, Thomas Armstrong in 2006, and Thomas Armstrong is a very well-known educational author, really put it quite succinctly. And I use this quote often, "to underscore the complexities of school budgeting." And that is, it's the codification of developing the means and capacity to facilitate human development with respect to each student's particular style and rate of learning, as well as an appreciation for the varied interests, aspirations, capacities, obstacles, temperaments and backgrounds that serve as a framework within each child. How many people have you heard in life say, "I don't do math"? Or how many people have said, "Well, I love English language arts", or "I don't do English language arts"? "I don't like the sciences", or "I love this, I love that"? That's because we're all different. We all come to this profession, students and staff, wired a little bit differently cognitively, okay? And from a passion perspective and interest perspective. Julie, next slide, please. There are three goals that we look at each year prior to developing the budget, because it's both a policy document and it's a financial document. You know, Policy 3101 involves the fiscal goals of the school committee. And one of those goals is to ensure comprehensive planning for the next school year, to explore all practical sources of income, to expect high-quality accounting and reporting procedures, to guide the expenditure of funds so as to extract the greatest educational returns. Those are directions to us in the administration and to our school system, a codification of what we really need to do in approaching the school budget. The next policy, 3102, 3201, excuse me, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, basically is that the school committee is looking for the efficient use of taxpayer dollars. And that the budget needs to reflect the school system's goals, objectives and vision, and the values. And we have specific core values in our school system. And the next, the last policy that pertains to our budget, 3202, is the presentation. The superintendent, regardless of whether Westford Public Schools or any other school system, is charged with responsibility, statutorily charged, to present a budget to the school committee. And then the school committee deliberates and passes, ultimately passes, a school system budget. Julie? So here's the process that we engage in each year. First of all, we do a priority assessment. And a few slides from now, I'll show you the various inputs that I contact and speak with, okay? The various stakeholders to provide enforcement of student and staff needs. Once I, along with the leadership team and our central office staff, put the budget together, I present it according to statute. Third step is the school committee deliberates and then ultimately approves the budget. The town reviews the budget carefully with the select board and the finance committee, along with the school committee. We generally have two sessions, joint sessions with the select board and the finance committee where a number of questions are asked and answered. Over the last two to three years, I want to say, we probably had at least 200 questions that have been generated that we have provided answers for. And as you know, in June, we will have our annual town meeting for the approval of the budget. Now, I must apologize for the typo in number six. That should be implementation after the town meeting obviously approves. Then we gear up. We start in the summer. Because the summertime for us is often just as busy as the normal school year is. Because that's when we're closing out one fiscal year and we're preparing for the beginning of a new school year in late August. Julie? The state has certain spending requirements. And this is sort of a thousand-foot view of what's called the foundation budget and net school spending. When the Education Reform Act was passed in 1993, the legislature decided that they wanted to have some minimum, and I mean minimum, level of funding that was going to be provided in each community throughout the Commonwealth that would try to address the disparity in funding between communities by setting some lower limit. So they established what's called the foundation budget. And the foundation budget represents the minimum spending level needed to provide what the Department of Education and the Board of Education and the legislature said was an adequate education. Now, that's a relative term. What's adequate to one person is not adequate to another. Okay? And the foundation budget, and we'll get into that a little bit more in a minute, is adjusted each year by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The most important factor in calculating the district's Chapter 78, okay, is the foundation budget and the adjustment each year. There's a wage adjustment factor that pertains, that is applied to the foundation, the elements of the foundation budget. And the foundation budget is derived by multiplying the number of pupils in 17 enrollment categories, capturing the type of student that is in each school system in 17 categories. And they establish a cost rate in 11 functional expenditure categories, such as administration, teaching services, operation of facilities, professional development, special education, et cetera. So there's a formula that's used for each respective community to calculate the foundation budget. Julie? Now, in addition to the foundation budget, there is a benchmark known as net school spending. Net school spending is a figure that each district must spend. It's required district spending. It depends on the district contribution to the foundation budget and its Chapter 78. But additionally, net school spending includes some of the elements that you see down below. The net school spending figure is calculated each year from Westford's very, very long and detailed end-of-the-year financial report that is submitted at the end of each fiscal year, each school year. It includes both student data, full-time equivalencies of students in all different types of programs. It includes the appropriations and expenditures from different sources. And so net school spending is a figure that is derived at from the expenditures from the prior year's school operating budget. That is, the budget that the town funds that we spend on the school system. But also, it includes municipal indirect costs expended on behalf of school operations. What that means is a proration of the time that the town finance director spends, the town manager, the assistant town manager, the highway department in terms of its plowing, the police department and fire department in terms of public safety involvement with our school system. We take and work out a proration of the value of those services from other municipal departments that are provided to the Western Public Schools on behalf and in support of school operations. So it's quite complex. There's nothing easy about net school spending. The two items that are not included in net school spending are capital, actually, long-term debt. Okay? Debt retirement, debt service, and also transportation. Because those can be so variable between communities. One community could be spending $500,000 on long-term debt, another one $15 million on long-term debt. And so there's where there is an inequity in terms of meeting net school spending requirement. Julie? So here is Westford's net school spending calculation for fiscal 2022. The state identifies from our end-of-the-year report a foundation enrollment of 4,586 students. Now, keeping in mind that some of these students are counted half-time, for example, kindergarten, et cetera, okay? The foundation budget that the state sets based on our student profile and the rates associated with 11 different expenditure categories, our foundation budget, which is the rock-bottom minimum, is 49.3 million. Now, the state establishes, based on the relative degree of property value, real estate valuation and income for each community, what the required district contribution has to be. And in Westford, that district contribution for FY '22 is 38, almost 38.3 million. Now, the Chapter 78 that we will be receiving, which is the major component of state aid based on educational expenditures from the prior year, is 17.2 million. That added to the required local contribution gives our net school spending requirement of 55.5 million. That is the figure that we absolutely cannot go below. Now, I will tell you, Westford each year has exceeded, as do most other communities, virtually all of the communities in the state. There are relatively few that don't meet this net school spending requirements. Most communities are 25, 30, 35% in excess of the net school spending requirement in terms of the funds that are appropriated to the school department for the operating budgets. So there are two terms that we have to pay attention to every year. That's the foundation budget, which is based on the foundation enrollment and the cost rates for various school-related functional categories set by the state that establishes the foundation budget. Then the state establishes, based on property values and income levels in respective communities, the required district contribution, the required towns' distribution that is augmented by Chapter 78. And that comes to the total of the net school spending. Okay? Keeping in mind that that net school spending figure is derived from not only school expenditures, but town expenditures and other town departments on behalf of school operations. Julie? Well, things changed dramatically in 1980, 1981, when the legislature passed Proposition 2 and 1/2. Prior to that period of time, budgets across the state, municipal and school budgets, budgets for all town departments and city departments, were based on anticipated expenditure needs. That led to escalating increases in property taxes, not only residential, but also commercial and industrial across the state. So there was a citizen's petition that was submitted to the legislature to pass Proposition 2 and 1/2, Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). That changed expense-based budgeting to revenue-based budgeting. So in 1982, Proposition 2 and 1/2 came into enactment. It limited the increase each year in taxation, local taxation, to 2 and 1/2% of the prior year's, over the prior year's tax limit. Now, since that time, municipal budgets have been shaped by revenue limitations. And we've talked about that for numerous years. Now, new growth, development within communities that comes on to the tax rule each year, is able to be added to the 2 and 1/2% levy limit raising taxation capability. So any new, and I'll show you that graph in just a minute. So new growth is vital, although it's sort of a catch-22 situation. Because new growth could come as a result of extensive residential development, which is a cost generator in all town departments, particularly the school system. Now, we often get questions, and the town finance director and town manager more often than we do in the school system. Does that mean a person's property tax can only go up by 2 and 1/2%? No, it doesn't. Because there are a number of, you know, a number of variables that impact property values, okay? And the taxation on those properties. So individual property bills fluctuate. And you could have somewhat similar houses, but they're taxed at different levels. Julie? So the Chapter 78, once again, is the major program of state aid to public elementary and secondary schools. In the Chapter 70 program in general, that's where the foundation budget, state aid and net school spending figures are derived. Okay? Those are very important sort of benchmarks that we need to pay attention to every year. But I will say once again that most communities across the state, including Westford, appropriate monies to the school system in excess of the net school spending requirement. Julie? This gives you a little bit of an idea. And sometimes, some of the state data is a little bit dated. But it's the best that we come up with from time to time, we're able to. But I wanted to show you the difference in education spending between 2008 and 2018. It decreased from 22% of the state's budget to 19% of the state budget. And when you're talking billions of dollars, that's a lot of money. 3% is a lot of money. Now, this gets to the classic, sort of the classic economic issue of growing needs of a population in town, whether they're adult, senior citizen, student-oriented. There are always growing needs and the complexity of those needs and relatively limited resources. So we have competing departments, departments competing for the available revenue. We do so very cooperatively and collaboratively. But the state also possesses that same type of predicament in that there are growing, increasingly growing needs and limited revenues from time to time. There are periods of growing revenues, periods of declining revenues. And I'll show that to you in a graph coming up relatively soon. Julie? Now, here's the sources of town revenue. As you can see, most of the revenue that goes to funding town departments, including the school system, comes from real estate and personal property taxes, residential, commercial, industrial and personal property. If you take a look at the residential component, 86% of the taxes raised come from residential properties. We hear you every year. And understandably so. You say, "You know, my property taxes are going up. They're going up, they're going up." Here's a classic case where everything comes at some type of economic cost or trade-off. This is an absolutely beautiful New England town. The town has made decisions, and very strategic, and I think very good decisions in terms of zoning and development over many years. Now, we can all have our different opinions of that. But the reality of it is, most of the residential tax base, a preponderance of the residential tax base, of the tax base in general, excuse me, comes from homeowners. And that makes it difficult. We have a growing, but still relatively low, commercial-industrial tax base. But keep in mind, there are towns across the state that have numerous businesses, industries. You have a house, you have a tire shop. You have a house, you have a sub-shop. You have a house, you have some other, you know, retail business. And is that community or those communities made a conscious decision to do that and expand the tax base? Westford has done an amazingly good job at keeping the town beautiful. Sort of a classic, as I said, New England town that we all enjoy working or living in. And it's been zoned and developed, I think, quite responsibly. Now, state aid accounts for 20%. There are other forms of state aid in addition to Chapter 70 aid. There are some categories called unrestricted aid. That's something mostly that comes up in town discussions. But for our purposes, the Chapter 78 is the most important component of that. And local revenues, for example, excise taxes, fees, building fees, building permits, the fees for building permits. The hotel and restaurant assessment that has dropped by almost a half a million dollars this year because of the pandemic. You know, the select board made a decision, and I think a very wise decision, to assess that tax, hotel and restaurant industry tax that, use tax that has provided over half a million dollars in most years to the town. That has taken a tremendous loss this year just alone. Okay? Julie? So here's an interesting graph. Now, this was taken from the town's Budget 101 presentation because I wanted to follow up on that slide that talked about the various sources of revenue and the increasing needs and limited budget revenues. I want to clarify something. This is a graph that you read right to left. Okay? So on the right axis, horizontal axis, you start out with fiscal 2008, proceed to the left to fiscal 2022. This underscores the fluctuation in new growth from year to year when new properties come on to the tax rolls. Now, you can see back in around 2000, fiscal 2015, stretching into the very beginning of 2016, the town hit a peak of about $1.8 million in new growth. Now, I'll show you a slide in a couple of minutes about how our spending in particular corresponded to this particular fluctuation from the 2008 to 2022 period. You see, this new growth that peaked in late 2015 oftentimes is accompanied by housing, residential housing, children, because families move here for the school system. And then they realize the excellent services that are provided by all other town departments in addition to the school system. And so most often, there are additional service requests in annual budgets. If enrollments go up, or if the number of homes serviced by the fire department, number of roads plowed or maintained by the highway department, et cetera, additional development brings the need for additional services. The very difficult part of the cyclical nature of municipal finance is pictured between 2015 and 2018, where you can see the severe drop in new revenues. That drop has made it extraordinarily difficult for all town departments, including the school system, to maintain the services that we have tried to provide to students that have led to a high-quality school system being ranked at or near the top of school systems in all of Massachusetts. It has not been easy for any town department to move from a revenue picture that occurred in 2015 to 2018. Now, it did peak up from 2018 to 2021, but back down, heading back down in 2022 again. So we never have been able to reach the high point that we reached in fiscal 2015. But keeping in mind, that new growth oftentimes means more families with school-aged children, more spending, more homes for fire department, police department, et cetera, as I've said. But then it becomes extremely difficult to maintain those services, given the sharp decline in new growth and with a 2 and 1/2% tax levy. You see, the 2 and 1/2% tax levy is on the entire tax base, certainly. But keep in mind that the indexing that applied back in 1981 and 82 is completely irrelevant with the indexing of services and commodities in today's world, where we have oftentimes double-digit cost-of-living adjustments and increases in various commodities, although there have been some declines due to competition and due to the infusion of technology into all phases of business operations that have made production, manufacturing more efficient and therefore pricing at somewhat lower and very competitive levels on the global market. But all of the things that we procure are certainly indexing in excess of 2 and 1/2% and have been for many, many years. I will tell you, one of the graphs that I have generally presented in the school budget presentation each year, I didn't happen to do it this year, but I mentioned it, is the Consumer Price Index for Educational Materials and Supplies. Our per-pupil allocation for materials and supplies in the school system has been maintained at the same level for about eight years. In that period, the Consumer Price Index, as it applies to educational materials and supplies, has increased about 37%. Okay? So what does that mean? That basically, if you want to simplify it really, that, you know, a dollar's, a dollar worth of goods back a number of years ago, if you take a base year, let's say like eight years ago, now buys about 67 cents worth of goods in a very simplified, simplistic manner. Julie? So keeping in mind that last graph. Now, this one proceeds from left to right. Okay? Now, you remember the increase in new growth that occurred fiscal 2012, 13, 14, topping out at 15, and then back downward again. This is a percentage increase to our school department appropriation. Now, please understand, I don't present this slide to complain, okay? Because all town departments are struggling. But I want to illustrate how the cyclical nature of municipal finance and revenues impacts our school system. We had a budget increase in fiscal 2015 of 4.6%. Take a look since fiscal 2000. Take a look since fiscal two thousand nineteen. One point seven percent, one point nine, two point four percent for this current fiscal year. And our anticipated appropriation from the town for next year is one point four percent. One point four percent. In my calculations, since about fiscal two thousand, from fiscal two thousand to about fiscal two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we averaged a three point four percent average annual appropriation increase, about three point four percent. Compare that to the one point four percent. One point four, once again, is because of the drastic reduction in revenues across the country, across the region, across the state, and locally that have been created by the pandemic. The most serious economic situation that we have seen, I think, ever, because of the impact on business revenues, on property valuations, on property values, the ability to build homes, occupy them, the ability to maintain jobs. I know that in Westwood, there's a, there are a considerable number of people who are out of work or possibly facing the likelihood of being out of work. A serious, serious situation. But this graph, now going left to right, shows you correspondingly how the appropriations to the school department have somewhat mirrored the new growth and the ability of that new growth to fund personnel and services to the constituents in the town, whether young school-aged children or senior citizens. Julie? So given the, the issue and the problem of increasing needs every year and limited resources, what do we do in the school administration and what does the school committee do in trying to assess what the priorities are of children? This is a student-focused school system. It has always been like that. When I hire people, whether they're teachers, whether they're custodians, whether they're assistant principals or principals, whether they're food service workers, whether they're nurses, you name it. My statement to them is that we focus on students. We don't make decisions that are in our best interests. We make decisions based on our strategic plan that will be rewritten by the new superintendent. The school committee input, the liaisons to the community, our leadership team, our principals and assistant principals, our coordinators, okay, our special education, some of our special education staff that see and hear information about students every day. We have extensive leadership team meetings in budget development. I meet this year remotely with the staff in every school. And I ask them what their priorities are. What are the current and emerging needs of students? Whether it's preschool, elementary, you know, including kindergarten, obviously, K to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine to twelve. Because if I want to know how to improve the school system and opportunities for students, I've never taken the stance that I'll read it out of a book from someone who hasn't been in a classroom in twenty years. I talk to our staff, who are with your children day in and day out, know their strengths and know their areas of need. And I want them, and they do convey that to me. We talk with families, we've had a couple of listening sessions so far this year, in the last two to three months. One of the things that came through fairly clearly is class size is very important. And I, I understand that we, we all want to get children into school, okay? That is an issue that we're all dealing with right now. But in terms of, if it was a normal school year, which we are basing this budget on for next school year, the input of our staff, including our leadership team, the school committee, our strategic plan, and the families, has been very important. You take a look at the school improvement plans. Most, most of them, if not all, have included goals that have to do with diversity, equity, inclusion, and social, emotional wellness of children. That is an increasingly important need in this type of school year with a pandemic and the spread of the virus concerning some more than others, the uncertainty over everything, it's been an extraordinarily, extraordinarily difficult school year. TSSTF is the Town and School Safety Task Force that has been meeting for about three years. Did a study of the physical security needs of buildings, but also the health and wellness needs of not only our students, but the town population. And that has created discussions and areas of need that we are attempting to address. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, we have a very active committee this year. We're looking at curriculum materials that are more reflective of diverse cultures, library collections that are more reflective of diverse authors and authors of diversity. Professional development for our staff to increase our cultural competency, to increase our engagement with students in a manner that allows teachers to ask questions that are reasonably safe for students and not offensive in any way, shape, or form, not that they're meant to be. But we need to, we need to be observant of the cultural norms of the population of our town in addition to New England and our nation. And we have a very active COVID advisory committee made up of outstanding pediatricians and physicians, school nurses, some of our staff. We meet every other week and we talk about the data. Yes, I will tell you, we're frustrated about not being able to have all children in school. At this point in time, we've been frustrated all year. We were hoping, quite honestly, that the Center for Disease Control, the CDC, would come out with some new, less restrictive guidance in the last week and a half, but that was not the case. So all of these sources of information have come to myself, the leadership team, and the school committee, okay? And we have prioritized, we've set priorities. And I've heard them loud and clear, and that is, class size is extraordinarily important. Some research has shown over many years that not only class size, but the actual size of a school, smaller elementary schools generally produce better results than large, very large, a thousand-plus-student elementary schools. Because of the more intimate nature, the close contact, remember, it's all about connecting with students. So class size is very important. Social, emotional wellness, more important than ever before. Pediatricians are not necessarily seeing an increasing number, an alarming increasing number of children with the COVID nineteen virus, but they are seeing an increasing, dramatically increasing number of students with anxiety and social, emotional issues and mental health issues. It is important for us to be more aggressive in addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion in what we do and how we do it. It's important for us to maintain our technology infrastructure. Not only the townwide expenditures on the infrastructure, but also providing responsible levels of technology and upkeeping that technology for our students and our staff. And also for providing clean, healthy facilities. I will say with pride that we have a reputation for having some of the cleanest schools in the entire Marimack Valley. Because we have a dedicated group of custodians. We take a look at the buildings when we walk around from floor to ceiling and see how those buildings look. And in terms of capital improvements, the town has had an outstanding capital committee. I will say, one of the, one of the best committees that I have ever served on in the town in the thirty-five years I've been here, just tremendous knowledge that is applied to the capital needs of all town departments and the prioritization of those needs. And in the school system, what we do, we budget for building maintenance, but also capital requests of a larger nature to the town capital committee, we look at health and safety requirements and what's needed to meet those. We look at regulatory compliance requirements. Are we meeting Americans with Disabilities Act? Are we meeting and being responsible about the Asbestos Has an Emergency Response Act? That came into play back in the nineteen eighties. Not so much anymore because everything has been removed or remediated, okay? Virtually every school system in the nation. But certain regulations that we are required, whether it be student-teacher ratios and special education, et cetera. You have to be very observant of our facilities' needs and how they augment the instructional process. The other facilities and maintenance needs we look at are efficiency measures. How can we make our, our schools operate more efficiently? We've replaced light bulbs with energy-efficient bulbs. We've replaced motors throughout our schools with higher-efficiency motors, consuming less electricity. Those in addition to many, many other efficiency improvements we've made over the last twenty-five to thirty years. There was a Commission for Efficient Town Government that came into play about fifteen to eighteen years ago. They recommended twenty-two or twenty-three cost-saving measures for the school system. We implemented eighteen of those, twenty-two or twenty-three. The others were deemed impossible for us to accomplish. So we've done our homework, we've done our part in trying to keep costs down as much as possible because every dollar saved in overhead goes into the instructional process. Julie? So what are the expense drivers in our school system? Well, first of all, it's not only the student academic needs. Our obligation to you, as parents, as residents, and all as taxpayers, is to provide a top-quality school system at the most reasonable cost possible. If you recall correctly, about six years ago, there was a website called nerdwallet.com. I believe they've changed their name since that, that time. But they do an assessment, they're a research firm like niche.com that evaluates us and other school systems across the country every year. They proclaim that the Western Public Schools represented the best bang for the buck of any school system in Massachusetts, which was quite gratifying to all of us. Because that means we're spending our money in the right places, we're not wasting money. Now, that is relative, I mean, anyone can look at any expenditure in the school system and ask us why we're spending it, and is it a waste of money? But there's a reason for everything that we do. So our job is to provide all students with rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum. Provide them with the resources they need, the materials and supplies, and the programs that help support each student. Collective bargaining, whether it's the school system or any other town department, also plays a very important role. It's a, one of the primary drivers because at least eighty-two percent of our budget is salaries. In fact, it's probably in the last few years shaded up since the override, closer to eighty, probably eighty-four percent of our budget. It includes the cost of living adjustment and step increases and column changes, which is the convention for the most part nationwide in the education profession. There are relatively few states in the country that still have state-established collective bargaining agreements. But basically, everyone makes the same salary, everyone's under the same working conditions, okay? Just a few of those, a few states. And sometimes we get asked about that. But in this state, chapter one fifty E of Mass General Laws requires school committees to bargain in good faith with organized labor unions, okay? Now, special education, obviously, we know that there are two factors that drive the increase in special education. It's the number of students who are identified as needing services. We do a comprehensive study to identify only those students who we strongly believe are in need of an IEP, an Individual Educational Plan. That means they qualify for special education services of a variety of of service levels. There are school systems that have much higher levels of special education students, because what they do is if there is a child in a classroom who's struggling, that child is automatically referred to special education. Now, in my next presentation, in two or three weeks from now, I'm going to talk to you about the role of interventionists at the elementary level. Math and reading interventions. Here's every child who struggles, and look, at some point in all of our lives, we've struggled with some particular subject, whether it was in elementary, middle, or high school. Some students just need some support on a lower pupil-teacher ratio, some individualized support. And this is where our interventions come in in extremely important manner, in that oftentimes, students' issues, whether they be in math or reading, are remediated because of intervention services with our elementary interventionists. It's one of the things that separates the Westwood Public Schools from many other school systems. Twenty-five years ago, we made the decision in this school system to hire interventionists in reading and math to work with children who do not qualify for special education services, but just need some additional help. Now, number two is the number of outer district placements, and that can fluctuate. And an outer district placement can range from forty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars, depending upon the severity of the needs of students. Under no circumstances should we ever, ever put our budget issues on the doorstep of our most needy students. We are all very, very passionate about that. You know, each of us who grew up being general, general education classes, not needing special education services, try each day to make an inch of progress. A student with a disability or a, what I like to refer to sometimes as a special ability, work hard and make a mile of progress each day. And we have to admire and certainly respect that. Getting on to facilities operations also. You know, in the last twenty years plus, we've had eight major building programs, either newly constructed schools, major additions, or major renovations. There were times we couldn't build schools fast enough because we were averaging between two and three hundred students every, increase every single year. Well, those facilities, even what we call in quote-unquote new, new buildings, Chris Foley, Stony Brook, the Miller, are aging and require preventive and corrective maintenance. Now, it's been very difficult for us to provide preventive maintenance because we don't have enough money to appropriate to those areas. But we do our best in keeping our buildings safe and healthy. Transportation, not only for the general population, but for our special needs population. Transportation has become increasingly expensive as a result of increasing costs of, the capitalization costs in terms of buying buses, leasing vehicles that we do. We do most of our own transportation in-house at a cost savings. Most school systems won't even consider that because they don't want to get involved in that. We've been doing it for thirty-five years in Westwood. But the reality of it is, the cost of transportation is escalating in every school system. Technology and information, we identified about twenty-five years ago, is one of the most rapidly increasing areas of, of of cost and therefore need for appropriation in school system operations. We need to, and we continue to engage in a responsible cycle of technology replacement for our students and our staff. Mike Wells, Townwide Technology Director, Julie Bedrow, Director of Digital Learning, and Gail Ansel-Menny, one of our technicians, who is also the procure of much of our technology, that done extraordinary efforts and have put in extraordinary efforts and done an outstanding job in procurement and replacement of technology. And obviously, inflation, utilities, insurances, vehicle costs that apply to all town departments. Although for years, we've tried to rely on hand-me-downs from other town departments in the, in the school system. Those costs have continued to increase. Educational materials and supplies, as I said, increased about thirty-seven percent over an eight-year period. So what that means is the purchasing value of every dollar appropriated to us declines. Okay, Julie? So here's where our revenue comes from. First of all, our general fund appropriation. That's the appropriation level that the school committee votes on, that the finance committee and the select board vote on, and is ultimately voted on by you, the participants in town meeting each spring. It's made up of property taxes, as we've talked about previously, the state aid, okay, chapter seventy in particular, the local revenues, meals and hotel taxes, excise taxes, building permit fees, et cetera, and, and other sources, okay, of fees and fines, okay? And revolving funds. But revolving funds are not general sources of revenue. Revolving funds are established by statute to be used only for the respective program or service for which they are collected. Some of our major revolving funds involve athletic revolving account used only on athletic-related expenditures. School bus transportation fees. Strings, kindergarten full-day program. Right? Those are fees. The, you know, we can add in there also a smaller fee is normally activity, student activity fees, but also the parking fees at Westwood Academy. Do we like fees? No, we don't. Have fees become a reality of the school system landscape across Massachusetts? Yes, they have, unfortunately. With the exception probably of those communities such as Burlington, Lexington, Bedford, and others that have extensive, extensive commercial industrial components to their tax base and, and many other communities that fall into that category. We also rely on school choice and circuit breaker. School choice, once again, is a program that I'll talk about in a few minutes that came with education reform. And all school systems are required to participate in it unless the school committee takes a vote to not participate in it. I will also talk to you in a few minutes about the circuit breaker, reimbursement for special education, because that plays an extraordinarily important role in funding budgets each successive year, and federal and state grants that come into play. We have one large grant, the IDEA grant, okay? The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And that is about eight to nine hundred thousand dollars, okay, that comes in each year. Comes into every school system throughout the nation and in varying levels of, of grants. State grants are relatively small because we're a relatively wealthy community in terms of property value and in terms of income. Julie? Well, in building the budget, once we get an idea from the town in terms of what the revenue scenario looks like, we go about building the budget, and one of the first components is projecting enrollments. Now, the great unknowns are kindergarten and first grade. Pre-K, we know with a little bit more certainty because of the early identification process. For children with autism or other disabilities. To estimate kindergarten, I look at the births every year. I have about a ten- to fifteen-year history of births that I receive, annual births, that I receive from the town clerk's office. I look five years out into the, into the future, when those children will be of kindergarten age. Okay? I take a look at the cohort survival ratio that has been established for many years by George Murray, a former school committee member who's done an outstanding job at our, doing our enrollment projections for many years, and he turned it over to me for the first time this year, after spending about thirty, thirty-plus years doing them at no charge to the town. So I take the number of births five years prior, and I multiply that by a five-year average of cohort survival, the cohort survival coefficient to come up with a kindergarten enrollment. Now, over the last five years, the number of children attending kindergarten, five years after they were born in Westwood, the ratio is one point six seven, meaning for every child that's born, five years later, one point six seven children have shown up at kindergarten. It's a five-year average. So that is probably the most accurate manner to, to assess and establish kindergarten enrollment. We take into consideration in grade one, the fact and the reality also, that some children come into the Westwood Public Schools in grade one, having attended a private kindergarten licensed by the state. Okay, and then from grades one up, we look at the historical trend in terms of cohort survival. How many children in grade one transitioned to grade two? How many children in grade two transitioned to grade three, et cetera? One of the things that you will see is our enrollment is beginning to decline in terms of the size of class sizes. Now, once in a while, you'll see, you'll see an anomaly. For example, in grade seven, you'll see four hundred and one students projected for next year. That's because this year was a larger sixth-grade class. Okay, but on either side of it, some smaller numbers, by about twenty-five students. So we've gone past the years in our school system where we are in the low to mid four hundreds in grade levels. And we are now transitioning to the upper and mid three hundreds for the most part. Now, generally, you'll see a fairly low projection for next year in grade two. That was one of the anomalies that occurred over the last few years. There were relatively fewer students in that particular cohort. Now, that may beg, beg the question, can we cut teachers in that grade level? Well, this is where I need to look another year or two beyond that and, and take a look to see if there's an increase in the number of children, because you don't want to cut good staff, great staff in one year when you only have to rehire somebody else the following year. So there's, you have to look very carefully at the enrollment projections to make staffing decisions. But that two hundred ninety-nine, I, eventually will increase in time because what I've observed, and I believe the school committee has observed it also through our conversations and in talking with our principals, is that when families move to Westwood, they tend to move to Westwood with children in the upper elementary grade levels or beginning middle school. Relatively fewer families move into town with children in preschool to kindergarten in grade one and two levels. So it's that upper grade, elementary grade, and the middle school where most of our families are, when most of our families are moving into the town. Julie? So we get the question every year. Why is your enrollment declining, but your staff is increasing? Well, sometimes the staff doesn't increase. This year, we cut a number of staff down based on enrollment decline. We scaled our staff back. We engaged in something called reduction in force. Okay, which means we reduce the number of staff in commensurate levels with our enrollment decline. But sometimes, we need to hire additional staff even though enrollment is declining. So enrollment changes could result in a decline or an increase in staff. And is there a direct relationship between enrollment changes and staffing? Well, not necessarily. It's all, not only numbers, but the needs of students also impact staffing levels even if enrollment is declining. For example, you know, we've known for years that we have an obligation to support our special education students, whether it be with professional teachers or paraprofessional teacher assistants. The state requires, and the, and the federal government requires us to devote specific staff to our English language learners. As we become more diverse, we tend to have more students who are learning English as their new language, some of whom have come to Westwood, speaking virtually no English. And it's our obligation to help them, okay, to develop skills to allow them to succeed. One of the emerging, the current and emerging needs is social emotional staff, adjustment counselors, school psychologists, because we have an increasing number of children exhibiting behavioral issues. Not only outward behaviors, but inward behaviors, which are sometimes even more concerning to us, withdrawal of students. Okay, Julie? So I wanted to give you a little bit of an example of what we do sometimes to save money. We have presented to us virtually every year situations where students who are identified and possess an individual educational plan. We have two options to either outplace them into a private institution or school, or we can hire a staff member as long, as long as the quality of the services that are provided to the student are at least as good with our own staff as the private placement would be. We won't sacrifice a student's development, whether in the general education or special education. Here, we're talking about special education. Okay, just to save money. As long as we can provide the services needed and quality services, we do that. Suppose we have a decline of a hundred students in, in some area of our school system across the district. We may hire a teacher assistant at twenty-five thousand dollars to work with a student who otherwise would be placed outside of the school system at a cost ranging mostly between forty and a hundred thousand dollars. So we hire a person. We spend a little money to save more money. Because in, in this particular case, depending upon the type of school or the educational setting that that child would go to, we would save, I'd say, a minimum of fifteen thousand to upwards of seventy-five thousand dollars by hiring the teacher assistant. So oftentimes, at town meetings over the years, I've been asked, why is your staffing increasing? This is one of the reasons why. We sometimes hire staff to provide excellent services to students at a much less costly level. Julie? All right, so this is a kind of a busy pie chart in terms of where do the funds come from that are funding our budget? Now, the first thing I'd, I'd like to draw your attention to is down at the lower left-hand corner of this slide. Our general fund request from the school committee and from the town is sixty-two million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Now, that's about four hundred and forty, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars more than the town is able to appropriate to us. So that is a situation that we will continue. The deliberations over with, with the school committee. Okay? Within this budget, though, with the net general fund request of sixty-two, five forty-one is the four-tier transportation. I want to make sure that I, I make that clear to everyone. Okay? That four point nine million you see below that, in terms of revolving and grant funds, those are additional funds that we need to fund all of the services in our school system. So our actual operating budget for the Westwood Public Schools for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, uh, two, two thousand twenty-two, excuse me, school year is sixty-seven million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. That, that figure you see up at the, the heading. It's just that we, we ask the town for sixty-two point five, and we use almost five million of revolving funds. So where does the funding come from? Well, we have the chapter seventy-eight of one point four four. Now, you have to add to that, there is new chapter seventy-eight. It came out of the Foundation Budget Review Committee across the state that, that worked diligently for a number of years in trying to update and increase the state's funding to school systems. Because the foundation-level budgets were becoming completely outdated and even more inadequate than when they were first passed in nineteen ninety-three, according to the Education Reform Act. So the seventeen point one and the hundred and thirty-seven thousand five ready to give us the seventeen point two million that you saw in the previous slide, okay, in chapter seventy-eight. The thirty-eight point two million, almost thirty-eight point three million, keeping in mind, is required contribution by the town of Westwood. Okay? That, keeping in mind, that is a bare, bare minimum that the state has set based on the relative wealth and income levels. The town has funded an additional six point five million. Because that thirty-eight point two will not fund our services in our school system. So the town funds a level beyond the required contribution, okay, to meet its net school spending requirement. We have various revolving accounts, such as the athletic revolving account, the school bus transportation revolving account, et cetera, that funds one point nine million. Now, the IDEA grant, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, funds about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay, in our two weeks this year. School choice, we are funding at about one point, almost a hundred and seventy-seven, almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And our circuit breaker, and I will explain the circuit breaker in just a few minutes, that's the reimbursement, special education reimbursement, based on the application that we and other school systems submit every year for what we refer to as high-cost students. We are appropriating two million dollars in circuit breaker funds to next year's budget. And that is the, that is the intent of the circuit breaker legislation. Monies that we receive this year are to be appropriated in the subsequent year's budget, next year's budget, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget. It cannot be carried over unendingly from one year to the next. Okay, Julie? One of the ways that we break down our budget for you to understand, and I'll, I'll get into this more in more depth when I do the second part of this presentation, which focuses on expenditures of the school system, is this category of expenditure, which is called object codes, object expenditures. You see, the state has a, a chart of accounts requirement for all school system accounting across the state. They break budget, and we break budget appropriations down by the fund, by the state function, the function of the, of the expenditure, the object. What is it that we're buying? Is it personnel? Is it, is it services such as contract services, such as special education? Is it services such as contract services, such as special education tuitions and transportation? Is it supplies, both educational and custodial supplies? Is it other expenses such as fuel and utilities? Okay? So this is a category that the state also requires school systems to analyze. It is called the object code distribution of budget funds. You can see our professional salaries. That's teachers, that's counselors, that's anyone with a license from the Department of Education constitutes 70% of our budget. Remember, this is a people intensive profession. Clerical salaries, 2.1%, other salaries, 12.5%. So about 84 and a half percent, if you take all salaries, are a component, a major component of our budget. Now, once again, we're obligated obligated by chapter 150E to bargain fairly with with bargaining units. But here's the other side of professional salaries. We have great staff in the school system. Every time I hire a teacher, I ask that teacher, tell me about one or two favorite teachers that you've had in your life. And those of you who are watching right now, if I asked you that question, you could tell me in a second. Because those teachers connected with the students, they bonded with each individual student, they connected with you and with me. They made us feel like we were being listened to and that they cared about us. They inspired and motivated us. That's what makes a great teacher. That is the backbone of the quality of a school system. And what I look for, and I I only say this to underscore the importance of people in educating our students, in everyone I hire, I look for what our staff now knows as my eight P's. Strong preparation for the teaching profession. Pride, professionalism, passion, patience, persistence, personality, putting them all together in performance. It doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we're able to hire high quality people. So I will give you a complete breakdown in our next session of what people, what services are in each one of these six object code categories. Okay, Julie? All right, so school choice and and just one point of clarification. Sometimes parents think that confuse school choice with open enrollment. School choice is the program that was enacted by the state when it passed education reform back in the early 1990s. Open enrollment is the ability within the town of Westford to have a child, for example, go from the day school to the abbott, or the abbott of the Christopher Foley, or the Robinson to the Miller, you get the point. Or living in the Stony Brook District, preferring for whatever reason to go to the Blanchard. And we make decisions on those choices every year. And oftentimes, the needs, cognitive, academic, and social emotional needs of students play very importantly into decisions on school choice, on the open enrollment, excuse me. So the legislature, when it passed ed reform, stated that all school districts will participate in the school choice program unless the school committee votes not to accept students. That siblings or families who have children who are initially admitted to a school system in the school choice program, siblings have preference. If the number of applicants exceeds the number of available seats, a public lottery is conducted. We do that in the presence of anyone who wishes to attend and observe that lottery. Students under the school choice legislation are allowed to remain in the school district until graduation. Now, tuition received for incoming students is calculated on a full time equivalency basis. Is capped for general education services at $5,000 per student. Now, I'll get, I'll clarify that a little bit in just just a moment. Because oftentimes I'm asked, does $5,000 cover the cost of that additional student attending the Western Public Schools? And the answer is is yes, and I'll explain that to you in a in a minute. For school choice students on an IEP, receiving special services, a special, the DESE provides a increment that augments the $5,000 revenue. And I'll show you how that is claimed in in just a moment. For Westwood students who choose to attend another school district, for example, anyone who wants to go to the Chelmsford Littleton or, you know, the, you know, Agawam Public Schools, any place, that represents a revenue loss of $5,000 to the town. That comes out of the town's chapter 78. Okay, each year. Julie? So once again, we receive $5,000 annually for a student in general education. And that's being expended by the school committee without further appropriation, in other words, without town meeting approval. That's part of legislation. Now, the supplement received received for school choice students who require special education services, English language learners, et cetera, is derived by, this is just the very, very top shot of a claim form that is sent into the Department of Education and with the types of students, the needs, and the rates that the Department of Education has set. Okay, to provide additional school choice revenue to communities for the specialized services going to some school choice students if they need those services. So the question becomes down below. Does the $5,000 cover? Because most of the students are in general education, not in special education, does it cover the increment associated with their attendance? And the answer is yes. You know, there's a concept in in economics called marginal cost. The cost of adding one additional unit or manufacturing one additional unit. In in this case, we're talking about adding one additional student. Well, one additional student, and because, let's say, we have 60 or 70 school choice, that doesn't mean they're all on the same grade level, dispersed throughout our schools and throughout grade levels, mostly at the elementary level. And so the addition of one additional student in our school choice numbers, and we we basically cap it at 75 students, does not necessarily require an additional teacher, an additional school bus, an additional, you know, teacher assistant, an extraordinary amount of more supplies of technology. Because keep in mind, we we lose students throughout the year also. Okay? So the marginal cost of an additional student attending the Western Public Schools, okay, is is covered by the 5,000 for the most part. And it's those augmented increments for students receiving specialized services that help us pay for those services also. Okay? The importance of school choice is that it is not fiscal year specific. We look to leverage our financial position from one year to the next. We are always looking one to two years out in terms of trying to project what revenues might be to the town and therefore to the school system. And how are we going to remain as stable as possible with the services and the staffing that we provide to students? That's one thing that I think we have done an excellent job at over many years is improving the quality of education in our school system by allowing and also allowing stability of staffing and programs and services. Now, that has impacted at times more than others. But we've had a great track record. And if you ask many of the staff, and I've talked with them repeatedly over the years, that stability is what has made us a great school system. Julie? So the revolving fund revenues, and once again, are not a source of general revenue. The funds from a specific revolving account can't be used for general purposes. Our largest, once again, school transportation, school choice, school lunch, but the school lunch program is not, does not have an impact on our budget. We are one of the few school systems remaining in the state that has a self supporting school lunch program. The participation rate of students in most school lunch programs across the state is about 52, 53%. The participation, which is reflective of the quality of our food service program, not, you know, not accepted by everyone, but that's okay. We try to provide as much nutrition as possible. Our participation rate by students is slightly over 70%. All right, so what does that mean to our budget? That means the school department has not had to take any money out of our operating budget from taxpayer revenues to to help support the school food service program. And in other, some of the schools districts, it's required sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars to support. So student athletics and activities, fees associated with the rental of facilities, the use of school property, school operations, you know, parking fees, strings fees, et cetera. Once again, we would prefer not to charge fees, but you saw the cyclical nature of new growth. Do you know the cyclical nature of state revenues in general that are appropriated to cities and towns across the Commonwealth? Julie?
Yeah. There are always questions about circuit breaker reimbursement. So Mass General Law, chapter 71B, section 5A. It reimburses a maximum of 75%. That's that's the ceiling that the state sets on reimbursement. A maximum 75% of costs exceeding four times the state average per pupil foundation budget. What in the world does that mean? Well, I'll tell you on the next slide in a minute, in just a minute. I'll go through an actual calculation of how the circuit breaker reimbursement works. Okay? The reimbursement is for prior year's expenses for both in district and out of district students. So this year's reimbursement is going to be used in next year's to offset next year's budget. Funds are deposited in a specific circuit breaker revenue account and can only be used to offset the cost of special education services. The state provides extraordinary relief to some school districts if special education costs exceed 125% of the previous year's claimed cost. Now, we have to submit a very detailed claim form of the services that are provided for students. Okay, particularly above four times the foundation budget. I'll show you that in just a minute. Eligible costs for reimbursement include instructional services, therapy services, occupational therapy, speech language therapy, psychological services, and specialized equipment, as long as they are documented in a child's individual educational plan. Circuit breaker at the present time and for many years has not included transportation and any building infrastructure modifications. It encompasses basically direct services to students. Julie? Well, how does the circuit breaker work and how is it calculated? The circuit breaker in this current fiscal year reimburses communities 72% of tuition costs. 72% of the tuition costs in excess of four times DESE, determined per pupil foundation level budget. Okay, so let's let's cut through all of the nomenclature here. The foundation budget per pupil has been set by the state as $11,800. It used to vary according to different communities, level of wealth, income, but they've become more consistent of late, the last couple of years, and said 11,000, most recent is 11,800 dollars per pupil. Four times that amount is 47,200. Okay, so what does that mean? Suppose we have a student who is in an outside placement at $100,000. Westford's initial payment is the, as you see up above, the 47,200, the four times the foundation budget. We are obligated to pay the first 47,200 of that $100,000 tuition. That leaves a balance of 52,800. That is the amount that the circuit breaker is applied to. The state pays 72% of that 52,800. We pay the additional 28% to bring it up between the state 72, the 38,016, and our 28%, 14,784. Those two added together sum to the 52,800. So if you take our additional payment of 14,784 at the bottom of the screen, you add it to our initial payment of 47,200. Westford pays 61,984 of that $100,000 tuition. The state reimburses us. Okay, we actually pay out, you know, the 100, 100,000, but we're only obligated for 61,984. The state reimburses us 38,016, 72% of the 52,800. The 52,800, once again, is the difference between $100,000 tuition payment and the initial 47,200 that we are initially obligated to pay in addition to our 28% of the 52,800. You just have to look at it for a little bit. Okay, just know it's based on the foundation budget per pupil, the 11,800. Four times the foundation budget of 47,200. And the state works on reimbursement, could be 70, 71, 72, up to 75%. Sometimes we don't know what the final reimbursement figure is until the last third or fourth fiscal quarter of the year of the year in the springtime. But this is how the circuit breaker works. So please know it's not 72% of the total cost. It's not $100,000 and the state reimburses 72,000 of that. Okay, it reimburses 72% of the cost above four times the foundation budget. Okay? So it's basically a two thirds, in in general, two thirds, one third split in this particular case. Julie?
All right, so here's how we use it strategically. We use a circuit breaker strategically from one year to the next. Okay? We receive circuit breaker funds this year, fiscal '21, the amount of 2 million, $2 million. That is to be appropriated in the fiscal '22 budget year. Why? Because it's unknown. It's a known figure. All right, you know, the circuit breaker, like everything else in the state, is subject to appropriation. You always want to be careful using current year, what's called current year circuit breaker funds in this current fiscal year, because you may not receive as much as you have assumed you were going to receive. So what the DESE says, and what we have been doing for years, is we apply one year's receipts of circuit breaker to the following fiscal year because we know with precision the amount of money that is available to appropriate to that following fiscal year. Okay? Julie? All right, so this is kind of a transition before we get to questions. And I'll stop in just a minute. I can't thank you enough for being patient in terms of listening to the presentation and just listening to me talk, and I apologize for that. But there's a lot of information to convey and even much more, much more that could be conveyed. But each year, the state also calculates per pupil expenditures. And you see Westford in green, the state in in blue. The state total per pupil expenditure is a little over $17,000. Ours is 15 and change, about a $1,900 difference per pupil. But this gives you an idea of how we compare in what are called the functional categories of
in what are called the functional categories of spending. In general, we're below the state in, in all areas, okay? And that's, you know, that, that is a double-edged sword in that we're proud to be able to provide a great quality education at a, at a rate that is less than the total per pupil expenditure on a state, on the state level, the state average, okay? Sometimes what this says is it's not only how much money you are able to receive to make good things happen, but it's how you spend it, and that's very important. And I'd like to think we've made wise investments in staff and programs to service our, our students. Julie, next slide, please. The funding sources that are included in that per pupil calculation, school committee appropriations, municipal appropriations outside of the school budget that affects the schools, police, fire, municipal government, highway department, et cetera, that provide services on behalf of the school system, highway department when it plows, our parking lots, driveways in heavier snowstorms, that can be allocated to per pupil spending and towards net school spending. Federal grants, the state grants, that should be state grants, not state growth, I apologize. Circuit breaker funds, private grants and gifts. Sometimes we have parents who provide us with gifts and we give them a full accountability of how that money and where that money is expended. And sometimes people ask that it be spent in a particular area, but there are some limitations on that certainly. School choice and other tuition revolving funds, athletic funds, school lunch funds, as I said, don't, doesn't affect our, our school operations, and other local receipts. Julie, last, I think we got the last slide coming up. The expenditure categories that are included in per pupil calculations. The reason I bring these last three slides to you is that many years, over many years in, in presenting our budget at town meetings, I've been asked a question or a voter has, has stated, well, your per pupil expenditure does not include all of the costs that the town spends on behalf of school operations. And it does, including insurances, et cetera. It does include those. Includes expenditures, the direct expenditures from our school system budget, but once again, also all of those services that various town departments provide to us. And we go through a very, very careful calculation so that it's not underestimated, but it's also not overestimated, okay? And so that's where I'll stop from here. You've had a lot of patience to listen to this, but I wanted to give you a little snapshot of the revenue side of the ledger. And as I said, in a few weeks, we'll do the expense side with as much detail as possible so you know where to look at the budget for, for various items and the what, when, when, why of our expenditures. And I'll be glad to, to take some questions, answer whatever questions I can if, if. You have some, Chris, do we have some questions?
We do, thank you very much. We have a handful of questions here and people have been posting them in the chat, which has been very helpful. I just have to make sure that I can find them all. So back to the very first question that we got earlier on was about specifically our, the, whether there were, how is the state accounting for COVID-related changes in enrollment impacting our state aid this year?
Great, great question. The state basically has a hold harmless provision. They understand succinctly that school systems have lost many students to either homeschooling, although those still, those are not counted on our student rolls because of the homeschooling, or have gone to private schools. And so now, keeping in mind, remote students are counted in our school system, but enrollments in general are down because of the COVID pandemic. The state recognizes that and is basically holding what's called holding the chapter seventy-eight harmless, not showing a precipitous decline for any community in state aid. That, that is a great question.
All right, second question. How does the school budget appropriation percent increase compared to other town departments in nearby districts? Now, that question showed up and then Ms. Almeida actually was able to post a link in the chat to the town's budget as well, too, so that might help, but if you can talk to that question.
Chris, will you repeat that? How does it compare to other, other school districts?
Well, to other town departments and nearby districts.
Okay, other town departments. I can't tell you, can't tell you how it compares with other school districts because they all have their own fiscal, you know, parameters. They all have a, perhaps a different service model for students, assuming it was a different, you know, a normal school year. None of the other town departments are really funded at any, any higher than the one point four. In fact, some, I think, probably less. So it's, it's just, it's a very, very, as all of you know and understand, a very difficult revenue year. Just the hotels and meals use tax in this town is down over five hundred thousand dollars from prior years. So if that's, you know, just an indicator, because no one's, no one was eating in restaurants, no one was occupying, you know, any of the hotels. And so another great question.
Great, the next question is about the four-tier bus transportation. And so a question was, you know, knowing that it offers a large cost savings and addresses the district goals of later start times for older students while aligning optimal learning times with developmental age procession. The question is, is that when this, when we were talking about the start times in the past, why didn't we talk about a four-tier model? And then there's a, a follow-up question is, how is the administration assessing the potential impacts to the staff based on a four-tier model?
Well, first of all, that sort of is tangential to the question. Why is this year the year that you're proposing the four-tier? If you keep in mind that graph, the new growth graph of the town, and then that subsequent graph of our appropriations, how it kind of peaked in two thousand and fifteen, but then has been declining, declining, declining. We've hit a point right now, we've had three years in a row of reducing our budget. Now, some of those reductions, keep in mind, where we were scaling back our staff. So those I don't really count as actual reductions. Those are just scaling our staff in an appropriate commensurate level with enrollments. But we've cut materials and supplies in, in all areas. We've cut some professional development funds, we've, we've cut some staffing. Because, you know, teacher assistance, the, you know, the elementary teachers would like to see it restored, but it's, it's just not feasible. And so we've been riddling away at budget reductions throughout the entire school system, trying to stay away from things that, that really might have a, a, a larger scale impact. You know, conveniences is an important issue in addition to instructional efficacy. And we all under, all understand that. So we, we've cut a lot out of our budget over the last three years. Now, that's with appropriations of two point four, two point six, two point nine percent. Keeping in mind, we're facing now one point four percent for next year. And that, and that's with all of the town departments also. Please understand, I'm not complaining about that, it's just that's the reality that we're dealing with. So how does that translate into four-tier busing? Well, it's either come, going to come out of programs and people, and we saw the reaction to that last year in the Stony Brook Auditorium when we were just simply talking about Latin. I mean, it was a huge discussion of that. Once we started getting into, to programs and services. In my conversations with all of you in our forums between parents, in my conversations with all the staff, okay? In our strategic plan, class size, if you remember all that priorities, one of the first few slides, I listed the priorities. Class size was an extraordinarily important priority. Well, if we don't have four-tier busing, then we get into class size and we get into programs and staffing. So it's, it, it's an extraordinarily difficult situation. And I, and I, look, I understand, some parents have said to the school committee, well, why doesn't the new superintendent make that decision instead of Bill? Well, here's the reality, this new superintendent is not going to have any easier time making budget reductions than what we have. What we have here is a cohesive team that has known the culture, known the services for many years and has only proposed this now as a last resort. Now, let me say this, I will be making the four-tier presentation next Monday night, March first, okay? I'm going to send materials out to everyone this Thursday, the school committee and to the public, explaining the sequence of arrival and departure and some of the issues, some of the questions and answers that come up. Keeping in mind that the four-tier system, as you indicated, Chris, through the, the person asking the question, does have some benefits for sleep study research and for students in adolescent years. We know that. We know that the youngest children are up like rockets at, you know, six o'clock, six-thirty in the morning, and our adolescents would love to be in bed until noon time. The research is compelling about changing the sequence of arrival. You add that to the cost savings that is vitally important to us. Look, if, if, if we don't ultimately pass a four-tier busing system for next year, we're looking at about a nine hundred thousand dollar difference between the town's appropriation and where we are right now. That is not an easy situation to overcome and deal with when we've had three successive years of budget reductions, okay? What that will allow us to do also, some, sort of a spillover benefit of that is that with the changed school start times, we have been able to configure, not to an extent, extensive amount, but somewhat configure high school periods and with a couple of longer blocks, okay? And so that, and that plays into the challenge success program, which advocates for longer blocks for students. And Chris, you, you know that well because you're a part of that, very important part of that, the committee. So we'll talk a lot about that next week, okay? But I'll have the information out to you this week because I don't want any, we don't want any surprises. The school committee wants it all out and I agree.
I think, I think the second part of that question, Bill, will be good to layer into the presentation next Monday, right? So I'll make sure that you get this question. I'm just going to ask it one more time, just that you hear it and then I'll send it to you as well. It was, how is the administration assessing the potential impacts to staff based on the four-tier model?
All right, thank you, and, and thank you for reminding me of that. There will be some challenges to the staff, like there will be to parents. As many of our staff are parents in terms of childcare, rearranged schedules. There are some staff who are at the middle, at the elementary level, excuse me, that coach middle and high school sports that may, may not possibly be able to coach. Or, or may, I mean, we'll, we'll see. There's some, some staff at the high school who, if they were working at the elemental, no, elementary level, may not be able to do that. And so that comes as a result of, of change, which is necessitated by budget shortfalls. And yes, it will take some adjustment. But I, I can't think of anything in life, in the last year in particular, that hasn't required some adjustment and recalibration and adaptation. And I don't say that lightly. I, I know that there are a lot of complaints, but there are also a lot of parents supporting the start times. I'm sorry, let me keep going with the questions.
Yeah, there's, there's two questions that we're dealing with school choice funds. So I'm, I'm going to take them a little bit out of order just to keep them together. The first one was, how does the use of school choice funds for F Y twenty-two compare to budget and actual school choice funds from recent years?
At the present time, we do not have as much appropriated to the budget in the school choice funds. That is one of the sources that we look at. And what we're looking at is, so what are the pathways to getting to the town's budget number? A higher level of utilization of school choice funds may be necessary, all right? So that's a reality. What we try to do is we try to use that as judiciously as possible because that is one of the most important sources of funds to leverage the stability of the school system and the school system's financial position from one fiscal year to the next.
Great, and the second part was from a different person was what were, what are the restrictions on school choice funds? And what can and can't they be spent on?
It cannot be used on capital improvements. It can be used on operating costs that are associated with the instructional programs for professional development, but it cannot be used for the more expensive capital improvements, any infrastructure development expenditures like that. Any, I can't go out and buy thirty copy machines with school choice funds, okay?
Great, the last question that I have in the chat, we might get some more in a minute, but the last question that I have in the chat is, in the next one to three years, the most precipitous decline in enrollment is projected at the high school level, current tenth and twelfth grade classes being bubble classes. So the question is, what is being done to assess the many elective offerings, physical education, et cetera, and see if some staffing adjustments could be made in response at W A?
We, we talk often about that. One of the difficulties that we're dealing with this year is that the course signups will not take place until April of this year, which is later than normal. That will give us some indication in terms of courses and staffing. But here's the important thing to keep in mind about the high school is that we have a quality teacher, a full-time staff member who may be teaching core content courses, but may also be teaching one or two electives. So if you cut those electives, now, this is just, I'm talking from a staffing position. If you cut those electives and you've got an outstanding staff member, but you cut that person down from a full-time equivalency down to point six or point eight or point seven, does that staff member then say, I can't afford to teach here with my hours and my, my schedule cut down? I'm going to go teach someplace else. So that is always a consideration at the high school level that we, we have to think of how the staff is deployed, okay? And what are they capable of teaching? And so, but know that we, we look at that carefully every single year. It gets, you know, it gets very difficult with the team concept at the, at the middle school to make.
Yep.
That's probably the most difficult area to make reductions of, of all of our grade levels.
Yeah, that's true. That's it for the questions in the chat. This is one of those moments when, like, whether I'm addressing the students in an assembly or the faculty at the end of a meeting and I, I risk the, the, the danger of saying if, well, if there's not any more questions, we can, we can adjourn. I don't see anybody else yelling at me in the chat that I missed a question and/or that we didn't cover them, so.
Well, I hope I haven't put everyone to sleep. There's, you know, there's a lot more to it. Please, if you have questions that you would like answered that we're not covering in this, please send them to me and I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to answer them. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll answer them not only individually, but I'll, I'll answer them in a school committee meeting. If, you know, if, if the committee will allow a little bit of time for that in terms of budget discussion, here are the questions I've received and here are the answers. So I, I want as many people to be as, as informed as possible. And I know there's a, there's some degree of frustration among some, some residents of transparency. Well, we run an open book here. And I'm always willing, we've got a great story to tell. I'm always willing to tell the story, whether it's financial or educational, so we'll do that. So any questions, please send them to me and we'll, we'll get them answered as quickly as possible.
One last great question, which I think we might need Julie's help in chiming into as well, is that whether these specific questions and answers can be sent out widely to the public since, since we, you know, there's about forty participants tonight. I do know that the recording is going to be available, so people can go back and watch the recording. I believe that we can, the, the, the entire chat can be archived, is that correct, Ms. Pedro?
Yes.
So at the very least, we'll be able to hold on to all of this and the, and people will be able to access this whether or not we type up answers to the questions or not. In preparing for other presentations, there might not be a lot of chance of that, but we do know that the whole thing will be archived at least, so, so that's helpful.
Well, I always enjoy the chance for engagement. We'll do it again, we'll do it in two or three weeks. Could be close to the three weeks, quite honestly, because we have a lot coming up on, on our agendas with the expense side. And that will be as, as specific as, as possible. So looking forward to seeing everyone again. And once again, any questions, please let me know and we'll, we'll answer them and mention them in the school committee meetings. Can't thank you enough for viewing, there are a lot of other things that you could have been doing tonight. And I appreciate you taking the time to spend with us and. doing tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time to spend with us and take a look at what the revenue side of budget development looks like.
Thanks, Bill. Take care, huh?
Thank you. Thank you very much to everyone, and, and good night.